Good evening, everyone. This is the Board of Education. It's Monday, September 25th, 2017. It is 7:05. We're in the North Boardroom. And we'll start with a roll call, please, Ms. Van Twyper.
Mrs. Oden.
Here.
Dr. Murataki. Ms. Van Twyper is here. Mr. Halliwell. Mr. Mosher.
Not me.
Mrs. Ziem.
Here.
Ms. Hohensie.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Farrington.
Here.
We have a quorum. Oops, nope, I don't. Ms. Dr. Mosely is here.
Here.
Dr. McKinney. Ms. Fitzpatrick. Mr. Donovan. Ms. Thomasetti. Mr. McIntyre. We have a quorum.
Okay. And just for the record, I received an email this afternoon from Mr. McIntyre. He's ill this evening. Dr. Murataki is ill. And Mr. Halliwell is away on work travel this evening and be unable to attend or call in. And as you may have heard, Mr. Mosher is with us through the phone system. We'll continue with the prayer, please, Ms. Van Twyper.
I'm not going to stand.
And then after that, the pledge by Thomasetti.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You should come down the front, all those empty seats.
Okay. Again, tonight, if there's no objection, we're going to move the contract, in this case tentative agreement, up on the agenda. But before we do that, Dr. Mosely has a presentation on the tentative agreement. And before he starts, I just wanted to say that these negotiations, as I viewed them, were kind of a continuation of our previous negotiation. We got to a point in there where the central issue was something common for both of us, and that was salaries and placement on the salary schedule. And it became obvious that that wasn't something we could resolve in the larger collective bargaining setting. And so we had a work group that spent some time after we'd concluded that one-year agreement. And there were equal representation from the union side and from the district to work through that. Because for those of you who may be watching, compensation for teachers is based on a salary schedule down the left side of the schedule, years of experience, or what is intended to be years of experience, and across the various degree levels. And you just come in and take your years of experience in theory and go across and find out what your pay is. Ours had, for various reasons, become kind of a jumble, random placement of people. And when you have 988 people spread all over this, it's really quite a job to sort through it. That work group between the last contract and this negotiations did some really difficult work, and I think provided us with the foundation we needed to start into negotiations, and has brought us to this tentative agreement. And having said that, Dr. Mosely, would you like to do your presentation?
All right. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to welcome to the board meeting. I would just say that I'm presenting on the tentative agreement as we agreed on last week. And certainly, we'll hear public comments from the union in terms of where they're at for their agreement with the TA. So tonight is my presentation to the public in terms of our perspective and how we approach the TA and some of the things that we wanted to make sure that were in the TA, or in this case, the tentative agreement. So one of the things that we looked at is that the essential questions were, what are the financial details of the contract? To what extent did the salary grid change? And what are the benefits of the contract from both sides? What I mean by both sides is from the administration and the school board's perspective and from the NTU. So just a brief history, and this is a history that we worked over the last week to kind of compile and to give a framing of where we examined the contract from 2011 to 2012. The teachers' union received $250 added to their annual salaries with no steps increased for the teachers. No step increases for teachers. And for the public out there, what I like to do is I talk around the slides. I'm not going to read everything, but certainly, I want people to get a sense of where I'm getting my data. From 2013 to 2012 to 2013, teachers received no steps, and they received $625 added to their salary. In 2013 to 2014, teachers received $1,140 added to their annual salaries with no step increases for teachers. And in this particular year, we added step zero for teachers coming into the district who are new. For 2014 and 2015, teachers advanced one step on the salary scale. And that happened the following year as well. For the most recent year, 2016 to 2017, teachers received $750 added to their annual salary with no step increases for teachers. So that's what I would say, a brief, very, very brief snapshot of the contract pieces. I ask, and please, I ask that I am being respectful. I've always been respectful of you. Can you give me the opportunity to be respectful back? And I would just ask that you'll have your time, but I've never treated you anywhere but fair and honest. I ask the same in return. So what we have here, I don't know if the public can see that. Rick, can you just low the lights briefly for us? What we have here is our current salary scale. And as you can see, we have teachers who are on, who have many years of experience but on one step. So one of the things you see in red is step five. And you'll see, over to the right, you'll see nine, 10, 11, and 12. That is step five. But you have teachers who have multiple years of experience, who have nine years of experience, 10 years of experience, 11 years of experience, and 12 years, all being compensated the same way, which presented problems. So what we did in this contract proposal, in this negotiation, is that we created new salary steps that reflected the teachers' years of experience. So in the new scale, and what we agreed on with the TA, it consists of steps nine, 10, 11, and 12. So teachers that have nine years of experience are compensated accordingly. Teachers with 10 years of experience are making more than teachers with nine years of experience. Teachers that have 11 years of experience are compensated accordingly. And teachers with 12 years of experience are compensated accordingly. Notice, in this particular scale, teachers with nine years of experience are not making the same as teachers with 12 years. This is a very difficult process. It is a difficult process because you're dealing with teachers who come in with multiple experiences, but yet are being compensated the same. So this is our administration and the negotiating team on behalf of the union attempt, I say attempt, to start to rectify those steps that were not compensated the years that I mentioned in the previous slide. So kind of giving you a snapshot. You have a master's plus five at $51,691 teaching credits. You have teaching credit years of experience. So just looking at that one lane, you can see teachers with nine years of experience making $52,041. Teachers with 10 years of experience, this year, I'm sorry, this proposal, so right here, if you look to the right, you'll see the new scale. You look to the left, you'll see the old scale. And in the old scale, you can see teachers with multiple experiences and teaching experience making the same amount. In the new proposal, the scale is spread out so that teachers who are making nine, teachers with nine years of experience make less than teachers in 10 years. Teachers with 10 years of experience make more than teachers in nine years, and so on, and so on. So this is our attempt to what we call to provide some steps for teachers who have the appropriate years of experience. So the benefits of this contract is, as we agreed on last week, is such. First thing that, one of the things I think is important for the district is that it provides an opportunity for peace and stability. Teachers will know exactly what they're making in four years. A sense of connectivity and reliability for our parents and students. They want to know who their teachers are going to be. They want to make sure that the teachers have an understanding of where they're going to be. And more importantly, we want teachers to stick around and be part of the Nashua community. It gives students knowledge of who their teachers are going to be. One of the things that was shared with us is that teachers in that middle range were leaving the district for various reasons. We understand that. But this is our attempt to really try to provide some stability, given our financial situation, to try to rectify that concern and that trend that was happening for our schools. This tentative agreement allows teachers to understand where they're going to be compensated for the next four years, and holds the district accountability for those, what I would call compensation packages. The genesis of such this four-year contract is that we want the teachers to know that there would be, that they're not going to be held back from any steps or anything like that. The money would be there for them to receive the steps as we've outlined in the agreement. Places teachers on the step equivalent to the number of years of experience and accountability for them. So in other words, teachers that will have nine years of experience, teachers that have many years of experience would be compensated for that. Teachers that, who are new to the district would definitely not make more than veteran teachers. And finally, the agreement that we proposed and we discussed with the NTU gives the school board and the administration some credibility in terms of trying to come to the negotiation table with the intent of settling a multi-year contract that would compensate the NTU. So that's it in a nutshell, board members, the general public. It's a very long process that has occurred, and certainly, I don't know the official word from the NTU or anything like that, but certainly, we're all eager to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Following that, I think, again, if there's no objection from the board, we'll just move right straight to public question and comment period. And then we'll act on the approval of the NTU agreement, if that's all right. And we had a sign-up sheet somewhere. Is it up there? Okay.
Adam Arqu, Forge Lurie Lane, President of the Nashua Teachers Union. We met today for about two hours, had a thoughtful discussion about the pros and cons of this contract. And by a vote of 357 to 269, members of the Nashua Teachers Union reject the tentative agreement.
I'm sorry, Adam. What was the 357 to?
357 to 269. The members reject the contract.
Any other public comment? Yes. Oh, yes, I have you on here. I'm sorry.
Linda Walsh, 207 Manchester Street. I know that on the agenda is the contract, so I'd like to speak to that. I'm usually not this shaky, but I am feeling sick to my stomach about it, that we're at this point. And I'm going to try to make my words coherent. This is my 18th year in Nashua, and I'm on step 13. I'm not at the top. I've been through six superintendents. I've been through 14 central office administration. That means higher administration, curriculum, and assistant superintendents. I'm on my third principal. I'm on my fifth assistant principal. It occurs to me that teachers are really the glue that holds this district together. It holds our schools together. It holds our students together. And we all collectively really believe in Nashua, and we wouldn't be here if we didn't. Admin will come and go. Principals will come and go. The Board of Ed will come and go. But we have been the history in this district for all of my years here. And I know from many of my colleagues that come before me, I know that we're very rich in history as well. But last year, we lost a lot of teachers that can go elsewhere and find higher salaries. And it's not just for a couple of thousand dollars. No one, I don't think, really leaves for a couple of thousand dollars. It's a big step to take. The vote was no on the tentative agreement, and although the vote was divided, I think that it's safe to say that a lot of the discussion that was had tonight was that we deserve more. And I want to qualify that for all of the public listening, and for the media that might be here, and for the board itself. It's not that we're selfish. I don't think we're selfish at all. I think that I sleep at night knowing that I'm not selfish, because I wouldn't be in this profession if I were. And it's not because we're not thankful. I'm very thankful we came to a tentative agreement. I'm very thankful that you moved so quickly after our last Board of Ed meeting. And when I saw the contract initially, I was going to vote yes, because it benefited me. I would finally get to the top on my 18th year of experience. I'd finally get to the top of the scale that I've been waiting 18 years for. And when I was young, I thought, someday I'll be important enough. Someday I'll be appreciated enough. Someday I'll be worth it. I was always important enough, and I was always worth it. But when my salary has stalled all along the way, part of it is my fault that we're in this situation, because I voted for some contracts I shouldn't have. And I think tonight, there was a change in the tenor of the meeting that really showed that people are, I don't know if mad's not the right word, because it wasn't an angry mob. Frustrated is a good word. And I think even more, it's more hurt. I think that's why I'm shaking. I think that's why I'm red right now, because I have to fight for what I'm worth. And I'm worth a lot when you take money out of it. But when you assign me to a dollar value, and then I do that math and I look at that, I was struck by that today. And I think the thing I was the most struck by, and this is why I voted no on the contract, is that so many surrounding districts have a higher pay scale for the majority of the people on that scale. And although we may sometimes start higher or end higher, it's not about who starts higher and who ends higher. It's about all of the membership. And a lot of people voted tonight against the contract, even though the contract helped them personally, and did a lot for them personally. But I think this was, I haven't seen it before in the times we've done this, is to see that collectively, we stood up and spoke for each other, and spoke out for those who were not being treated fairly on the new scale. And although I appreciate it, it fixes a really big mess. Part of that is our fault that we're in that mess, and I'm going to take that ownership. I should have never voted for 750. I shouldn't have voted in the contract before that, because now there's so much makeup to do that it borders on impossible. And I understand that. But as I voted tonight, I thought, okay, I still think that we can, and I'm not using it as teachers. I still think that this board, collectively with teachers and with administration, I think we can ask for more. It would be a very different conversation if I didn't look town to town to town to town. And what really struck me was Manchester. And I thought, wow, that's a throwdown, because someone came up with the figures, and I thought, wait, we're worse than Manchester? I will be worse than Hollis every single, you know, day of the year. But if we're really starting to go so far down that we're now not as competitive as Manchester, that makes me really sad for what I came to 18 years ago, because I love this city and I know that we're better. And I think we should do better, and I think we can do better. And I would encourage you not to take this as a sign of disrespect or as a sign of selfishness. I would want to lock arms with you, and I would want to go forward and ask the city for really what education deserves, because it's not about what we deserve. Of course, everyone's going to make that argument on Facebook tonight, that the teachers are selfish and that we're asking for more money. But I think that what we are paid in comparison to other cities, it says something about how our community values education. And we have to collectively care about education, and we have to collectively care about our students. And the quality of education that we have in Nashua partially depends on the contracts that we settle. And so I would urge you not to be upset about this. I would urge you to have conversations with us about how we move forward, because it's going to be a scary time for all of us. And I just want to reiterate how this was not a selfish decision. It was a, finally, it was a wake-up call to say, I'm tired of being worth something secretly to my parents and to my students and to my colleagues and to sometimes my administration. I want to be important publicly, and I want to be worth something publicly. And that's really what it made a difference for me, and it changed my entire way of thinking about it, is that I'm no longer willing to say, I'm worth a little amount. I'm not worth a little amount. I'm worth a lot, and I'm going to fight for it. And I hope that you decide to fight alongside teachers. Thank you.
Okay. That's all we have on the sign-up. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none. Do we, on our side, do we have a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Nashua Teachers Union for the years 2017 through 2021? Mrs. Ziem.
I make a motion that we approve the contract for the NTU for the year, years 20, whatever those years.
17 to 2021.
Thank you. Years 17 through 21.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by, I'm sorry, sorry, hand over here. I know who you are. Ms. Van Twyper. Mrs. Oden.
Could I ask for a roll call, please?
Sure.
I would like the...
It has to be a roll call, because we have Mr. Mosher on the line here.
Okay. I will not be voting to avoid a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Mrs. Ziem.
I would like to say to Mrs. Walsh, for whom I have the greatest respect, and to all of you, for whom I have great respect, please, it is such a sensitive thing. This board knows that you have not been treated fairly in the last five, six years, whatever he showed there. I was trying to actually count up how many times you actually got the step increase. And obviously, the majority of the time, you did not get the step increase. The spending cap, from my perspective, the spending cap puts this board in the position that we have to choose between the classroom or doing, or giving you the raise. Two of the years of this contract, we actually gave, in one case, I think it was even more than the estimated increase that we would get. In other words, all of the increase that we were going to get from the city was going to go to your raise, which means that any increase in cost of living, where is it going to come from? It's going to come out of our classrooms. So it is not an easy decision for us. I ask only that you, we were, this was an earnest effort to try to start bringing you where you should be, but we can't, I just don't see that we can do it all. And we've been in negotiations constantly. One of the things that was a great concern for me was that when we do one-year contracts, the next year, we're right, we don't even get a break. We just go. And so we're constantly negotiating the contracts. And to do justice to our new administrators, we would like to have some time to spend on working on the classroom, and working, and I hope you all agree that we have some wonderful leadership now in the district. We have been so fortunate to get really bottom-up people. I believe these people care about all of us. I don't think it's a top-down, which I think we've seen way too much of. So I ask you all to, and I understand you are doing it, please, Linda, you break my heart. At the last meeting, when you all came and made your references, I have to say to you, I went home brokenhearted, because I said, they think I don't care about them. They think that I'm indifferent to their pain. They think that we don't realize the struggle that we've been, I think we do realize. And the idea of locking arms, I couldn't agree more. I would like to lock arms with all of you. I have the great, I love every one of you, even those of you I do not know. I love you for what I know you bring to our children, to our students, to our kids, to our community. Our community will be better because of it. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I ask that you understand the, this hard position we're in. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Mrs. Hohensie.
Thank you. I too would like to thank Mrs. Walsh. I really appreciated your comments tonight. I talked to a few other teachers, but I think it's very helpful to get that feedback. I wasn't on the negotiating team this year. Last year, it's great to keep the feedback going, because when you reach impasse, then the feedback stops, then you go into mediation. We've got to keep communicating. What I liked about Dr. Mosely's presentation was that history putting in context how much you made over the past six years that he put up on the screen. It was an average of $691.25 for those four years, plus the two steps. So I mean, that's riveting. I mean, that's under $700. So I don't know which pocket of the district we're supposed to open up and find the money. That's still a mystery to me. I'm new on the board, but I can understand that we have a situation here that is difficult to resolve. In the effort to lock arms over this, I ask, I almost beg, that the teachers will promise to continue making recommendations to students when they go to college. I don't know how long this will drag on, but I don't want the students to get the brunt of this. And I'd also ask, if you can, to work with the administration and committees, if it's possible, because that stymies our district from moving forward in some of the work that we have to do. I don't know, I mean, it's maybe not in the contract, you don't have to do it. But last time, when that lockout happened, things did get set back, and it does harm the children. I don't know how to put the two pieces together, but I'm hoping we can work out something as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we voting, or are we...
We're going to vote. We're going to vote, unless anybody's got something else. And I don't want to get caught up and get us into negotiations sitting here, because this isn't the place where it happens.
Well, let me just read partially what I wanted to say, if I can.
Gently, please.
I'm good. I'm good. I'm not reading that stuff. You know, the tentative agreement represents a, really, a determined effort to make years of experience the new placement criteria on the salary grid. We did this because this is what the union asked for, and we really tried hard to respond to what was requested. It's also something the board wanted to do. We were fully aware of the problems in the salary grid, and really, the stress that it has put on the district. Nobody likes people who are capable, qualified to leave. We don't want them to go. But I understand that people go, and that's natural, that people change jobs. I think teaching is a unique industry where people tend to stay longer than they might in the public sector. We were committed to addressing the salary grid issue, if I can just call it that. And I believe we did the best we could, given the budget realities that we still have. And like Mrs. Ziem and Ms. Hohensie commented, something, you know, we, one thing, one of the reasons why I was very much in support of moving forward with the contract, and I will vote yes, is that we were able to pay for it without impacting the classroom. And we received administrative assurances that we had the money, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there, but we didn't have to cut anything. We didn't have to cut any positions. And that was part of our deliberation, which was very important to me, and we were able to accomplish that. You know, the board negotiated this contract, and... You know, the board negotiated this contract, and we'll see what our vote's going to be in a minute, because we value our teacher's service and recognize their contribution to our students and our community. It's because we want our teachers to be better compensated and more competitively compensated. But the sheer fact of the disparity is, didn't happen in one contract, it didn't happen in two contracts, it probably didn't happen in the several that Dr. Mosley reviewed tonight. It's a cumulative thing over a long period of time and sadly, the money to fix it is simply not available in one budget cycle. And even in the four budget cycles that we attempted to do it in, obviously, that's not satisfactory. Thank you.
Okay. So before we go too much farther down that road, why don't we vote? Roll call, please, Ms. Van Twyver.
Mrs. Oden.
Excuse me, just for clarification, the motion is to approve the tentative agreement with the NTU, National Teachers Union, for the years 2017 through 2021.
Mrs. Oden. Ms. Van Twyver votes yes. Mr. Moser.
Yes.
Mrs. Ziem.
Yes.
Ms. Hohency.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Six.
Six oh.
Oh, one abstain.
Motion passes. Okay. So that takes care of that. Moving on with the agenda. We're at the consent agenda. Anybody move to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hohency. Motion is to approve the consent agenda. Everything's roll call, as long as Mr. Moser's with us.
Want to wait?
Let's just wait a minute. We'll let people a chance to...
Yeah, I was going to say, you might want to take a break.
What was that?
Let them, let everybody.
So the motion is to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, please, Ms. Van Twyver.
Mrs. Oden. Ms. Van Twyver votes yes. Mr. Moser.
Yes.
Mrs. Ziem.
Yes.
Ms. Hohency.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Passed.
Ananamous. No items removed, any communications outside the consent agenda? Seeing none. We've done the public question and comment. Superintendent comments. Dr. Mosley.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been a, I want to say, a very hot September, which is unusual, right? So with all that said, it's been very, very busy in the district. So let me start by saying that the majority of our time, my time has been spent with the negotiations, but I did have an opportunity this past Friday and into the weekend to get out and observe the Battle of the Bridges, which is a nice event. So I'll stop by saying, it doesn't matter who won or who lost, it's all about good sportsmanship and team. I do not have a side about who won, who won or who lost. I enjoy the events that took place last, on the football field on Friday night and had an opportunity to go back to the football fields on Saturday to watch more events. So that was very, very nice and all the kids did very well. So thank you for that experience. The curriculum and evaluation met this week, along with policy. We met last week to discuss some things, so I know that's going to come up eventually during the meeting. October 3rd, at 9:00, I'm going to have superintendent, what I like to say, I haven't quite figured out the acronym for this, but superintendent's coffee, we'll call it, from October 3rd at 9:00 a.m. and I'm starting off at Lead Street. And then the following week, no, I shouldn't say following week, two weeks from there, October 19th at 6:00 p.m., I'll be at Nashua High School North to do the same event. And one of the things I want to be clear to the public, I made one in the morning and one at night, so that if you don't see me in the morning, you can catch me at night. That's an opportunity for anyone in the public, teachers, principals, community members, kids, to come and ask me questions, to have, I'll probably have some food on the night piece, but to come in and ask me questions and to have a dialogue with me. So I'm looking forward to that. Just some happenings, Lori Rothaus received and secured a grant for the Adult Education Program. One grant was for about $100,000 and the other one was about $1,300. I mean, $13,000. So I just want to publicly acknowledge Lori Rothaus for all her work and tenacity in making sure we have grants and funding for our adult ed. Maybe we'll get to this a little bit in our agenda item. I did talk with representatives from a consulting company, an educational firm, it's called Education Advisory Board, and they talked with me about some opportunities to do some collaboration around strategic planning, not so much doing the planning, but the components to the strategic plan. For instance, survey development, how to develop survey questions that are not biased or get to the point of where you want to be. So it could be under the umbrella of school culture, leadership, curriculum. So I had an opportunity to talk to representatives from that organization. So, the long and short of it, it's been very busy and, you know, from everything that's happened, we have a lot of work to do. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Board response to superintendent's comments, we'll start over here and go around. Nothing? Mrs. Ziem. Mrs. Hohency.
Yes, I just have one thing. Dr. Mosley said a while back that we were going to embark on a discussion of board governance and that we were to think about somebody who might facilitate that conversation. And I've been thinking about it and I think we need somebody that the board knows and trusts. And I would like to nominate Dr. Mosley to facilitate that, if the board thinks that would be something that they would also support. I just, I personally don't want somebody from the outside that I don't know, maybe you do trust, maybe you don't. I feel more comfortable with somebody we know and that somebody's got skin in the game for the outcome. So I think Dr. Mosley has both those qualities and that's where I would like to move forward.
Thank you. I'm humbled. Thank you. That's very nice of you. I really appreciate that. May I make a recommendation to the chair and to the board? We're going to talk about governance, I believe, under new business, so I want to be respectful. Can we have that dialogue when we get to that point? If that's okay?
Okay.
Mrs. Hohency. Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. So interested to learn more about the Education Advisory Board. Did they leave any materials, presentation or whatever?
Yes, they did.
Can you please share that with us?
I can certainly do that. They offer a wide range of services and opportunities for the district, so certainly, I can share that information. I had an initial conversation with them that probably lasted for about maybe 45 minutes and then there's some follow-up dialogue. I'm actually going to have a phone conference with them this week, so certainly, I can get that to you. Thank you.
Just for myself, I just want to go to your first comment. Fall is my favorite season by far and I'm very disappointed with it so far.[1169.01][1169.01](LAUGHTER). Ms. Van Twyver. Nothing over there. Okay. We have, I'm sorry. Mr. Moser, do you have any comment?
Hello?
Hello. Do you have any comment that you'd like to make, a response to the superintendent's comments?
Not in particular, but I have a certain reservation about the contract and what is taking place tonight.
Okay, well, we can get to that later on in the agenda.
So, yeah, I'll discuss it with you another time.
All right. And in that regard, I was somewhat remiss here. Mr. Hallwell, when he communicated with me that he would not be able to attend, he did indicate that he fully supported the agreement, so he can't be here to vote and be on the record for it, but he was fully supportive of it. So moving on to the Committee on Finance and Operations, in Mr. Hallwell's absence, Mr. Kaufman, would you do the report, please?
Thank you. We have a recommendation coming forward to send policy KHB to, well, let me just read the recommendation as it's written here. Recommendation to send policy KHB, advertising and sponsorship in schools, as revised to the full board for referral to the policy committee.
Second.
Okay. So it's just kind of passing through the board on the way to policy.
Right. We wanted to respect the turf of the policy committee and give those guys over there a chance to look at it.
Okay.
If I may just comment on it?
Certainly.
I think what the recommendation is from finance really took to heart and incorporated the feedback we got from a parent group. Mr. Donovan, were they Charlotte Ave? Yeah, so it was a Charlotte Ave PTO came to us with a very, very sophisticated, high-end proposal to raise funds for their playground. And this policy is a direct response to some of the things that they asked for and I hope they will find it, you know, inconsistent with what they wanted to accomplish on behalf of the students over there. And I think it really is going to lay some foundation work for us to work a little bit easier with partners and companies like BAE and Home Depot and Lowe's who give us and help us with various things, to be able to give them some more recognition. So we want to move that forward, over to policy.
Mr. Moser, Dr. Mosley.
Yes.
Does that include what you wanted to change to FF a while ago? Did you have any input to this policy?
I did. My understanding, and for this particular policy, that it was going to go back to the policy committee.
Right.
Right? And then I was going to be there.
Okay.
Right? And then I was going to talk about why we were going to make the modifications and keep some things the same. So my understanding is that the policy around naming was going to go first to policy. We'd discuss it and then we'd bring it back to the board.
Okay.
That's my understanding. Am I wrong? I'm seeing head shake. Okay. Because I know there was some discrepancy on some language and I'd rather it go back to the policy, so the policy committee, so we're all clear on expectations and then come forward to the board.
So what did I miss? We're good? We're going to vote?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, so the motion is to send policy KHB, advertising and sponsorship in schools, refer it to the policy committee. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Oden.
Yes. Sorry, yes.
Ms. Van Twyver votes yes. Mr. Moser.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Ziem.
Yes.
Ms. Hohency.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Yep, it passes.
Ananamous. Mr. Kaufman, one more.
And the other item to bring forward from the Finance Committee is a recommendation to accept and place on file the FY '18 August transfer report.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hohency. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Oden.
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver votes yes. Mr. Moser.
Yes.
Mrs. Ziem.
Yes.
Ms. Hohency.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
It passes.
Ananamous again. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
You're welcome.
Committee on Policy, Ms. Van Twyver.
We have no business to bring forward to the board this month. All the things that we were considering require more discussion. And the policy on psychologists, the proposed psychologist is going to be put off until November. That's going to be delayed one month because Ms. Hohency has requested she's going to be out of the country. So that's, we'll take that up first thing in November. The other policies will come forward again in November. One thing that I would like to put out, point out, is that some of those policies might not have any change to them, but they will be reviewed to be reaproved. It is the responsibility of the policy committee to review all policies every four years, which is a monumental task. We have just put the last policy from the 14 and 15 legislative years on the policy. So now we have a little time to review some policies. And in your packet last time, there were a number of policies that were referred to committee and there is a potential work listing in your packet for you to review and we will be taking them in order as they are on this list, unless the proposer has a priority. So, and the next meeting is, I think, I don't know the date. Do you know the date?
No.
Well, it's the third Tuesday of the month.
Okay.
That's all.
Great. Thank you. Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation, in Dr. Meritaki's, is there somebody from the committee that would...
Dr. McKinnney's going to speak, if that's okay?
Can't make motions.
Okay.
If you'd like to talk about the meeting, Dr. McKinnney, and then we'll have somebody up here make the motions.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. That's not my, I just, I realized that Dr. Meritaki wasn't going to be here, so I just wanted someone to be able to report out, so I will defer to whatever the board wants to do.
Let's not fight over it. Whoever wants to report.
Well, I'm on the committee.
Anybody? Want to do the committee? Okay. Mr. Kaufman, you're going to do it all tonight.
I guess, I'm in the critical path tonight. Recommendation to instruct the district to put the career pathways sequence in the program of studies, send it also to the Guidance Department and to put it on the website and request that the CTE and Guidance Directors come back to a future meeting with a plan.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hohency. That's quite a motion. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Oden.
I just want to ask what the plan is for.
And I'm reading it again and trying to recall myself, so I think Dr. McKinnney, now is the perfect time for you to jump in.
Look at him over there, smirking. Knew it was going to come back to him.
He knew it was going to happen.
The plan was for the two Guidance Directors and the CTE Directors to come to a meeting in November and explain how the career pathways are applicable at the high school level and the planning of coursework for students.
Thank you.
Yep.
If you recall, this came, I think, came to the board before and it was being suggested just be accepted and placed on file and because of all the work that had been done, we felt it was important that it not just be placed on a shelf, that we get some input from CTE and Guidance as to actually how it's going to be implemented. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Oden.
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver votes yes. Mr. Moser.
Yes.
Mrs. Ziem.
Yes.
Ms. Hohency.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Passes.
We're on a roll tonight.
Seven zero.
Ananamous votes. Committee on Human Resources, Mrs. Ziem.
The Committee on Human Resources would like to make a motion to approve Heather Lucy as the interim Assistant Principal at Nashua High School North at a salary of $83,000.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Oden. Is there any discussion? And this is an interim position, you said?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
She met with the committee earlier and she was absolutely lovely. I look forward to getting to know her better and have great confidence she'll be wonderful.
I was likewise impressed.
Yes.
Anyone else? Roll call on the approval of, I'm sorry, the name?
Heather Lucy.
Lucy. For the 2017-18 school year as an interim assistant at North.
Didn't put that in there, sorry.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Oden.
Yes.
Van Twyver votes yes. Mr. Moser.
I vote yes.
Mrs. Ziem.
Yes.
Ms. Hohency.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington. Passes.
Excellent.
I have another motion.
Sure.
I have a motion for policy BDEB to be referred to the Policy Committee.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ohensie. Do you want to explain what that is, just briefly?
It's actually something that we've been doing anyway. It's basically, it says that when we are hiring management, if you will, the other Board members may come and sit, what's the word? Without...
Observe.
Observe, thank you. They may come and observe, but they may not engage in the dialogue. And I think we have the exact language, if you'd like me to read it somewhere here.
Well, that's okay.
It's in the packet.
You got it?
Yes.
So, may I?
Yes.
The BDEB is annotated in our packet. Is that the complete changes that you want to make?
Yes.
Or will you be attending to further amend this?
I believe this is complete.
It's complete?
If you would like me to attend, I certainly will, but if I don't have to, I won't.
Well, yeah, okay.
If you would like me to, just let me know, and I will, okay?
Well, there may be other things that...
Come up?
Come up on it.
Okay. I'll make an effort to be there.
Thank you.
Okay, and just for the record, I'm going to vote in opposition to this, just on the fundamental belief that I think that this Board needs to work at pulling back from these, a lot of these activities and kind of along the lines of the concept of Board Governance and what the role of the Board should actually be. So, be that as it may.
But we're just voting on sending it to Policy?
Yep.
Okay.
So, the motion is to send the policy BDEB, Human Resources Committee, the policy is on Human Resources Committee, to the Policy Committee.
Right.
Roll call, please.
Yeah, who made the second? Ohensie?
Mrs. Ohensie.
Thank you. I'm going to get a rubber stamp pretty soon. Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver votes yes. Mr. Mosher?
No.
Mrs. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Ohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
No.
Five, two.
Okay. Anything else from Human Resources?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any liaison reports? Nope. Unfinished business. Referral of the Board of Alderman meeting, R. 17-129. I think that's all around the Daniel Webster, setting aside the money and all that sort of stuff. Do you want to speak to that, Dr. Mosher?
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
I was just reminded that because the personnel recommendations were not on the consent agenda, we also need to vote on them.
Okay.
So, I make a motion... I'm so... Thank God for Mrs. Oden.
That's right.
I make a motion that the personnel recommendations dated... Whoever has that date, please come forth, please. September 25th. September 25th be approved.
Seconded by Mrs. Oden?
Revised.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please. On the approval of the personnel recommendation, September 25th, 2017, revised.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Van Twyver votes yes. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Ohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Now, the Board of Alderman.
It's my understanding that there still is a motion on the agenda, a motion at the table for the city to research the feasibility of purchasing the former Daniel Webster College property located at 20 University Drive. Basically, what that is, is that, you know, despite what's happened in terms of it being voted down or not supported through the bonding process for the city, that motion is still out there. So, the question that the Board has to answer is that whether you want to continue to pursue that motion or not. Keep in mind that what I've shared, what's brought out there is that because of the timeline, pursuing the Daniel Webster College is going to be a significant challenge for the district. So, what I'm asking the Board, or what is presented is to the Board, do you want to continue that feasibility or not?
Mrs. Ziem.
May I ask a question? At one point in time, I heard conversation that there may be a property that was essentially part of Daniel Webster College that would be auctioned separately on Perimeter Road. Was that a fact, or am I, or was that a misnomer?
I'm not aware. I don't know that. My understanding is it's just one big auction.
I would also like to say that in the tour, we took a tour of the Daniel Webster College facility. While some of the buildings were absolutely beautiful, and the grounds of the baseball diamond and the physical, they were wonderful. But there was accommodations for like 550 students to sleep, housing, if you will. And I personally would not want to see the city go into subdividing because I think that takes real estate expertise that they, that they're not qualified to do. And I also don't think they're qualified to handle housing. And so, I would, I think it would be an overkill for them to do that. So, I guess my inclination at this point is that it would not, it would not be a good thing. Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman.
To enable Dr. Mosley's discussion and vote to move forward, I move to approve the recommendation to keep this proposal in front of the Board for consideration.
Of which Board?
In front of the Board of Education. And this is for the purpose of voting. I fully intend to vote no against the motion I'm making. He's looking at me like, what are you doing?
No, I was looking at you like, because I, I'm sorry to cut you off.
So, it was to enable the vote. So, I, just as soon, if you vote yes, you want it. You vote no, you don't. So, that's why I phrased it the way I did.
Okay.
But I will be voting no against my own motion. I'm just putting it out there so we can have it, so we can vote and continue with the agenda.
I would like to hear from Dr. Mosley as to whether he is in favor. With the timeline comment he made, I'm not sure. Maybe I was misreading that. Would you clarify your position on this?
I am not in favor of this continuing the feasibility study at this time.
Thank you.
For the Daniel Webster College property.
Thank you.
It's just not feasible for the district at this time.
Mrs. Ohensie.
Thank you. I believe there are multiple parcels in this auction. When we took the tour, they did point out certain buildings were in a separate parcel. So, there are multiple parcels. It has been divided. Most of those are on the road, whereas the campus is pretty much contained. It is a major undertaking. I've heard people suggest that if we didn't want to do out-of-district placement for special ed, then the six dormitories, instead of, you know, putting them somewhere, you start creating them in town, but that's a major undertaking, and it's probably beyond what we could do in that short period of time. So, I'll probably be voting against it. But it is a very interesting facility.
Anyone else?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I wasn't even going to vote. I was just going to say, we'll just let it lie. But I also toured the property. As you say, it's an interesting property, but it, there's so much to it. There are some things, the auditorium and places like that are just magnificent buildings. Other buildings, I don't know how we could ever use. We don't need that much land. In order for this to be seriously considered by the city, I think that it would require probably close to a year of really good analysis and study as to how it would, could possibly be utilized, not just for the school district, but for other departments, because it is certainly more than what we could undertake. And we may well get down the road and wish that we'd purchased it. But I don't think that we could, we can justify a purchase at this time, and so therefore, I don't, I don't see any need to do it or even to vote on it. But if we're on a vote, we can do that. What else? No? Mrs. Oden?
I went on the tour also, and when I looked, I think we looked at 13 main buildings. Of those 13, I believe, six or seven were dormitories. And somebody said to me, couldn't you repurpose them? We don't know if there's asbestos in those or not. That wasn't, that wasn't told. We haven't researched it. And I just think after Burke Street, I think we need to be real cautious with what we're doing. So, I can support this at this time.
Just to speak to the dormitories, you know, they're built to be dormitories. The corridors are narrow. They aren't the kinds of, they aren't built the way most of the buildings that we would utilize would be used. And you get into the question of the structural integrity. Are those load-bearing walls in those corridors, can, what can you do? There's just too many unknowns, I think, just to continue with this. Anyone else? We have a motion to...continue?
Continue.
Okay, continue with the process. And I suspect it's going to be a bunch of no's on it, but we'll do a roll call anyway.
I was just going to say, don't lead the public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Oden?
Disregard that.
Could you reread the motion again, please?
I don't, you have it written?
Not to continue pursuing the Daniel Webster property.
No, can I just, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, sure.
Can I just jump in? It's around the feasibility language. So, maybe I can just, I would not, the vote is to decide whether the Board wants to continue with the feasibility study that's currently on motion for the purpose, that's a motion at the Alderman for the purchase of the former Daniel Webster College property located at 20 University Drive.
Okay.
It's the feasibility...
I know, but Jackie, I'm sure got it.
It's the feasibility language. We just want to get in there.
No. Van Twyver votes no. Mosher? Mr. Mosher?
I think that it's a wonderful thing to think about, but until it can be justified, no.
Ms. Ohensie? No. Mrs. Ziem, you forgot.
It's all right.
I'm sorry, I wrote no for you. How would you like to...
No.
Didn't mean to speak for you.
No, you can speak for me. You spoke correctly.
I could have sworn I heard you say no.
I did.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
And Mr. Farrington?
No.
No, it fails.
Okay. Moving on to new business, we have a topic here, student reassignment. Do you want to speak to that, Dr. Mosley?
So, what's happened in this particular situation is that when we get students from surrounding districts for a variety of reasons, we may send a student, for instance, to Merrimack. And that student might find that environment a little bit more suitable than a place like some of our high schools. So, it was an agreement, I say was an agreement, between superintendents, where they would come up with an agreement on tuition and guidelines for accepting students who are what we would say out of district. That policy has changed, and it's changed in a way where the Boards, the sending and the receiving Boards have to approve the agreement. So, what we have presented to you is all the information of the student. And the sending district is Hudson, and we have the receiving district. So, at the Board meeting in Hudson two weeks ago, they approved the superintendent's request to ask us to accept a student from Hudson. And so, with that vote, the vote comes back to us, the Nashua Public Schools, for the student to come to our school and to be a part of our community. And the Hudson Public School is going to give us a compensation and tuition for this student. So, all of that is outlined in your packet. What I'm asking the Board to do is just approve of the student to attend our school district.
Mrs. Ziem.
I make a motion that we approve the student reassignment from Hudson, New Hampshire.
Second, anyone? I'll second it. Discussion. Mrs. Ohensie?
Sure.
I'm just, is it the superintendent's recommendation that we accept, or is this just a pro forma that we always accept?
Couple of things. My recommendation is to accept. My, the caveat to this is the last, and I'm just going to paraphrase it, that the superintendent Lawrence Russell from Hudson wrote in his letter. And my response is, he wrote that the student must maintain the standards and attendance and academic behavior within our school. For long and short of it, if the student cannot comply with our expectations and academic and behavioral expectations we have in our school, the student's going right back. And I don't mean that to not, not to sound not supportive, not to sound as if I'm not supportive of the student. I just think this is a situation where the national public, the national district is making an accommodation for and accepting a student coming into the district. So, and Superintendent Russell has already talked to the parent and the student about that expectation. I believe in giving any student a chance, and they're going to be compensating us. And, you know, who knows? We may need to cross that bridge if we need to go to Hudson as well. So, that's why it used to be an agreement with superintendents, but now it's moved to the Board, which is fine. I think it's a nice way to be transparent on that. And just so the Board knows, and then the public is aware that, you know, we have followed procedures, and I am aware of the student, and we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman, and then Mrs. Oden?
Thank you. I have two questions. The first one concerns transportation. Is it the responsibility of the Hudson District to transport the students or the parents?
It's the student's response. The only thing we're providing is just the environment. Transportation is the student's, the students and Hudson's responsibility. And I will write back. Once the decision is made here, I will certainly write a correspondence back from the Board's decision, as well as our expectation, and transportation will be included as well.
Terrific. One other thing, thanks. Is there an option for this student to go to Clearway? Because I'm concerned, I, my preference is that our students be given preference to a Clearway spot before someone who's out of district to us to be redirected to Clearway, to the Clearway option.
Clearway's not even an option on this.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Oden?
I understand, I have sympathy for the student. I had concerns about the attendance and some of the behaviors that were listed that we received. I would like the superintendent to ask for a report at the end, maybe every other week, to make sure the person is on goal and is attending school, not leaving early, and is respectful to all staff members. I think we owe it to our staff.
I agree.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I got an idea.
Okay.
You know, we're always looking for space for, you know, different needs, for the kids out of Brentwood and so on. But we have, you know, other schools around. And I was just wondering if there would be a possibility of a, of a, kind of a joint takeover of the facility, or for some part of the facilities, to address the needs of certain schools, like from the school district in Milford, Sahian, Hudson, Bishop Gerton, and maybe some others that would be interested and joining into a joint consortium on acquiring parts of the campus and developing it into different needs so that one part of it, just, I'll throw this out just as an example.
That's all, Bill, Mr. Mosher?
It could be used as, say, a particle physics laboratory. Another part would be into a sports medicine facility.[1768.68] be into a, a sports, uh, medicine facility, another one be into, you know, anything that you can put your, your mind to, and, uh, develop it as that and use it among the different entities of the, the educational, uh, perimeters in.
We've already decided on, on the previous vote, Mr. Moser, that we're not gonna go forward with that. So now we're determining whether or not we're going to support the administration's recommendation to allow a student to tuition in from, uh, Hudson.
Uh-huh.
Okay?
Okay.
Anybody else on the Hut, Mrs. Zine?
I, I just wanted to say that I continue to be moved by Dr. Mosley. Uh, he looked at the needs of this child. I think it says a lot about who our new leader is. And I hope the public is picking up on this, because we're, we're a new district. We're gonna be, we're gonna climb the mountain and feel the breeze, I really believe we are. And I, I just hope that our teachers will bear with us till we get to the mountaintop, 'cause we're all gonna lock hands at some point in time. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on the Hudson recommendation? The motion is to approve, I got the wrong page up here. To approve the request for a student to tuition in from Hudson, reassignment. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes. Ms. Van Twyver, yes. The Moser?
Yes.
Mrs. Zine?
Yes.
Ohensy?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay. Uh, the next topic under new business is, is a discussion of proposed Elm Street renovations. Um, I don't know, there's nothing really been proposed yet, but anybody wanna go? Mrs. Zine?
I would just request that, because, because it, because we received a lot of attention on this issue in the Nashville paper, I would like to have any, I am not part of the Joint Special School Board, so I'm not as informed on this particular, um, if we have an estimate, if we have something formal in writing, I would request that the board would have a copy to see it.
Okay, let me just, since I talked to the Telegraph, um, I didn't write the headline, Nightmare on Elm Street. We always have schools on the list for renovation. And we had Main Dunst, uh, Mount Pleasant, Birch Hill, and Main Dunstville were considered and Elm Street.
Sunset.
Because of the, uh, the problems last year with the overheating at Mount, at, uh, Mount Pleasant, that kinda was moved up, Birch Hill and Main Dunstville moved down. And Elm Street is that one that's sitting there, and everybody's not sure what's gonna come from it. It's been mentioned, Mr. Halliwal or myself have mentioned it a couple of times at Joint Special, but there was a, a more detailed conversation at our finance meeting in June, I think it was June thirteenth. Uh, we had the engineers and architects come in, and, uh, and I probably should add that there was also a request made, uh, for an analysis on Mount Pleasant and Elm Street as regards the, this is a technical term for it, basically looking at the educational feasibility of the two buildings going forward, other, the class sizes, uh, the rooms, the right size, the technology, all those sorts of things. So that we can have a complete sense of what we have with those buildings and, and all that. The engineer and architect were in that evening for that meeting, and we talked about, as far as they had gone, uh, and the things that they had looked at, the, the project was pushing up around, and they were just ballparking it, there's no, there's no firm number. They were ballparking it at around fifty million dollars for the purposes of conversation. When the number gets that large, I think that we, the community, needs to have a conversation about, do we continue with that building, or do, is it time to go in another direction? And in part, because there is a, one element that was talked about in that conversation, uh, the floors in the oldest part of the building, and that they can't get to them, and correct me on this, Mr. Donovan, when I start to wander off here, they can't do, currently go in there and do as detailed an analysis of them as is required. They need work, I think, as a general, uh, agreement, how much work? And then there's a question of the structure of the building, and what purpose the floors hold. In fact, they could be required to hold up the walls, something a little like that, which would certainly add to a lot of the cost to complete the project, if you gotta brace the walls to do it. And then there's the added element that it, they're estimating it's about a four-year project. So, and then when you're all done, you still have a big school on a small piece of land that has very little parking and no athletic fields. So I think that my, what I have been saying ever since we started talking about this at Joint Special, is that everything indicates to me that we have to have a much more detailed analysis and conversation around this before we make any kind of moves, and it just ties into that. And, uh, that's kind of in summary, what I said to the paper.
No, no. Can you, can you, do you remember, does anybody on this board remember how much they, when we built this high school, do you remember the dollars that we put in this? Well, I'm just wondering, fifty million dollars, you know, you ask yourself, could we build a brand-new building for less than that somewhere?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I, so that was, but I agree with you.
But then there's, there's a question of land.
And we need a community conversation, because it's much, you know, it would be the whole city and so, but thank you for sharing with me the history.
If I go way out on a limb, I wanna say the two high schools are around a hundred and forty million dollars, something like that.
Cumulatively?
Two together.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Mr. Donovan's cringing over there, so maybe I shouldn't have thrown that out.
Well, I, I wasn't around when they were built, but I, I think it's around there, yes.
Thank you.
I would like to, I would like to have a figure on it, if you could get it, please.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I just jump in a little bit? Couple of things. Um, I would, I would say, in terms of cost for the Elm Street Middle School proposed project and discuss, I would refrain from using any number. The cost of that renovation, new construction, at this point should be around X, that's how much it's going to cost. I wanna just make sure that we have all of the information out there. The middle school was one project that's on the docket. The other piece that's on the docket, too, is, uh, Mount Pleasant as well. And there was some cost analysis done on that particular elementary school as well. So both of these, uh, proposals for construction projects are going to go to the finance committee and discussed publicly. I think that's a great opportunity for the public to, to see what's on the table, what's being proposed, what are some benefits to it, um, to, to renovations, the drawbacks. So I think that is a great way to have that, um, I would say, public information out there. It's gonna be shared with the public, uh, at one time, and then we can kinda hear and get some feedback on that. So I would, you know, caution the public at this point, in terms of any construction project, until we get all of the information, because of all of the variables and information that, um, Mr. Farrington has shared, it's just, it, it's, it would be too premature to put any cost on any project at this point.
And just, just to add to that, I, I think that, uh, our experience in other renovations, when we deal with these older schools, Sunset being the most recent, once you get into it, you discover even more things that, that add to it, and so it's gonna.
So do you, off the top of your head, do you remember what Sunset ended up being?
It was about twelve million.
Twelve million? Thank you.
Okay.
And that started like at seven or five, am I wrong?
Oh, no, it was higher than that. But it went up quite a bit, because we found out the roofs were not structurally sound for the weight, for the current code for loaded bearing for the weight of snow. And then some of the soffits started falling off when they started working, so.
Yeah, I think the original estimate was the nine to ten million dollar range, it ended up about twelve.
Yeah. Anyone else? I'm sorry, Ms. Van Twyver?
Thank you.
You bet.
Um, part of, part of the changes to the, um, Elm Street included changes to the Keith Auditorium, and, um, I think we need to keep that in mind, too. So the, um, that's a beautiful auditorium for the symphony, and we need to remember that, I think we've sort of talked about doing those changes for him, so.
No, I, I think that's part of the public discussion.
Right.
What, what we gain, what do we lose, how can we conserve those things, that sort of thing? So it's a lot more to talk about than we have answers for tonight.
Yeah, so, I, I have some ideas on it, too.
Okay.
And, uh, I think that, uh, the, the use of these things now as educational institutions, they have lived their life. And I believe that there is, uh, a, a much higher calling for these, uh, for these places, especially for Mount Point and for Elm Street. And, uh, to have a, uh, totally new school, where you could combine the, uh, the two, uh, two facilities into a, uh, a, you know, a, uh, elementary and with the secondary, uh, in the same place, and have adequate, uh, you know, facilities for the students, for the teachers, for the public, and, uh, and have a, uh, what would we say, a fire sale or a yard sale with the, uh, the other two buildings? And have a, uh, you know, find a, a higher purpose for them. And I think, uh, Mrs. Van Twyver had the idea there, where she said, uh, you know, to, uh, make the Elm Street into the, a facility for the, uh, for the performing arts. They have classes where these things can be taught, and, uh, without overcrowding. You have the, uh, facility for the, uh, you know, for the, uh, for the shows to, to put on. And you would have a parking, which could be re, repurposed also for the public, uh, when they come to see one of these shows. So I think that, uh, you know, we'd be throwing good money after bed if we try to repair, redo these or rehab them, and, you know, we're still gonna wind up with old buildings, basically.
Well, like, you point out, there's a lot that needs to be talked about, and, and some of the, uh, some of the aspects of it reach beyond this board, and so it's gonna need to be a community conversation. Mrs. Ohensy, and then Ms. Van Twyver.
Thank you. Um, I believe the finance committee is gonna be October eleventh, just for the public to know, the neck, is that the next finance committee on the yellow sheet?
Changed, I'm not sure.
It's changed.
They tried to move it, I don't know if that, I'm not sure.
Okay.
It was going to be tomorrow night, I think, and that was canceled and it was moved.
On the yellow sheet, we have eleven.
Oh, okay.
The eleventh. So I'm wondering, just to let the public know, if this is accurate, that it would be October eleventh at six thirty at the district office?
That will be the next finance committee. I'm not sure that Elm Street discussion is coming up at that point. This is.
I was just gonna ask if it was gonna be on the Joint Special's agenda for the next meeting.
I don't, I don't think so. I'm not sure which agenda, when it's getting on. I think, and I, I think you gotta just slow down and kinda let this thing, there's more things that need to be done before, we're not ready to, having another meeting to discuss things to say, well, we're waiting for more information, I'm not sure that makes any sense.
Yeah, I, I think that, for, for people who, to, to understand, there, there's a Joint Special School Building Committee, which is, uh, made up of members of this board and the Board of Aldermen, but that, that committee really comes into effect when we actually have decided on a project, and that group oversees the development of the project and through, through the, uh, final phases. But prior to that, this board has to make some determinations about what we want, and then we would make a proposal and go through the Alderman and all that sort of stuff, and we're a long ways from that. Uh, but I think, again, it's gonna, we have to be aware that, because of the auditorium primarily, that there are other people in the community that are interested in this process, and it's, so we're gonna have to bring in people from, it's not gonna just be an internal decision that we make. But, you know, all, all of this, it's not unlike Daniel Webster, that, that could've been something that the, the, the city could've maybe found uses across various departments to use, and this is gonna be another case of that, of that sort of thing.
May I continue?
Yes.
Okay. So there's another one on October nineteenth, and I'm just putting this out.
That one's, that one's been canceled.
That one's been canceled.
That was for a different issue.
Okay.
So keep an eye on our schedule, please, we'll be putting things out.
I'm just hoping that we have some discussion, I'm encouraging the board or the administration to have some discussion before the election on November seventh, because there's that ballot item about an art center. So whether the city wants a separate art center, whether they wanna work with us on refurbishing the Keith Auditorium and using that as an art center, that's why I put it on the agenda, 'cause people are saying, what would it cost, is the city gonna invest in this, or the city gonna invest in the school district? So I just want that information out there, so people that are looking at the two items can make an informed decision, because those were the questions that were asked to me by constituents of, about this issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're all set on Elm Street, for now? All right?
No action?
No action. Uh, security, email information, is this something that's gonna require non-public, or?
I hope not.
Okay, then go.
So, we had some discussion around, probably at our July board meeting, around policies and procedures around employees that were, um, employed in the district last school year, who had left since July first of this year. So, uh, working with the technology department, uh, we, um, were able to identify former employees who are here, and, um, we found out that their, you know, their emails after ninety days of leaving the district were still active, and, um, you know, subsequently, they were, um, deleted from our system. There is a procedure that, and policy, that the technology department has outlined for, for me and for the board, just basically outlining, and I'll just kinda summarize it in many ways, is, um, you know, the IT department, um, you know, they follow the steps to ensure timely and accurate use of, uh, account deletion. IT departments receive city, uh, city employee feed and filters from anyone with a staff status of, of termination final. So for this particular situation, it was, you know, we try to accommodate former employees and, and faculty who are transitioning out of the district with a grace period. So, um, it is likely that some of our former employees did have access to their accounts when they, uh, left the district. And so, you know, working with the technology department, that's certainly something we're gonna rectify and make sure that we can do it in a timely manner. I just want to say to the board that, um, we identified a, what I would call a chasm. We are addressing it so it doesn't happen again, and certainly, um, going back and trying to figure out who sent an email on July, I'm just throwing out a date, I'm not looking, I don't have anything in front of me, July tenth, it's not gonna do us any good. I ask, given everything that's on our docket here, that we, um, put closure to this, please.
Kaufman?
Excuse me.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Um, aware of the discussions that we had over the summer, one of the things that I did, and, uh, I asked the HR committee tonight to take up a draft policy that I've written, which I just call exit, which, which would govern from a board policy level, um, a bunch of things about people who leave the district. One of them is email access, you know, taking somebody's badge, they shouldn't have a badge if they're no longer employed by the district. So just things like that, and they will, I hope that policy proposal comes forward first to HR, and then on to the policy committee for subsequent, uh, review.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, next, I think it's your, your time here, Dr. Mosley. We're gonna talk about governance tonight? Give it a shot.
Okay. So, I, I, couple of things. Part of what I would like to do, and I apologize, 'cause I actually have this written out a little bit here, so that's what I'm looking at. I know we talked a little bit about governance, um, I'm talking to the board in general and to the public, and certainly, uh, there was some discussion around not using the New Hampshire, uh, School Board Association, but perhaps, um, they could have access to resources there that could be, um, helpful, like, for instance, if we wanted to access a facilitator or someone like that, we could certainly not be a member, but ask them if they, if we wanted to, uh, maybe reach out if they had a facilitator or some resources there. I mentioned that there was an education, education advisory board that maybe, that could provide us with some, uh, some resources around governance as well. Ultimately, my, my question to the board, and I don't, would like to go around and, and kinda get that feedback, it would be helpful for me to kinda do some more research, or, you know, say, yes, you wanna move forward on this. So my first question is, you know, is there a consensus around governance and, and wanting to, um, what I'd say, refine that and to really have those dialogues and have the chain of command? Second piece is that, whatever the elections Second piece is that whatever the elections yield, there is, there is going to be a new board. Even if all of the current members who are running are, are elected, there's still going to be one more new person to the board. So there is a sense of induction to, uh, for that new member and, and, or members, I don't know, but certainly what I would like to say, laying the foundation for board governance is, is, I, I believe, important, not just for this board but for the way the district runs. Checks and balances, the school board is responsible for policy, school board is responsible for hiring, firing the superintendent. So these are the types of things that we need to discuss. I'd like us to discuss, put some, um, some information out there and some, what I'd say, uh, governance in what we do. I want to say, despite everything, and then you can call me quixotic, you can call me, um, um, you know, I, I always like to fight the good fight, so to speak, but even, you know, observing this meeting today, I, I, I believe is a good meeting and, and we're making some progress. We're just, it's, it's baby steps, and I appreciate everyone's, uh, support and, and commentary on this and really working at it.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. At the last board meeting, I made a whole bunch of policy proposals, and one of them included, um, which was referred to the Policy Committee, is actually a board policy that would govern essentially a welcome packet for our next board. So maybe sometimes great minds think alike and we're on the same wavelength. So I, I, one of the things that happened when Ms. Hoence and I came on the board is the board did not, they chose, they voted not to have sort of a orientation meeting for us. So knowing that I'll be here in January, I will be voting to encourage some sharing of information with our new, at least one board member. So I'm very much, uh, inclined to agree with Dr. Mosley that we wanna lay a foundation for, you know, just so the board knows how it's supposed to operate under our, our own policies and that we make an effort to inform, uh, the future members of the board of, uh, not only the policies and responsibilities but also how things work, how the, how just the motions and the whole Roberts Rules work and, and how, uh, motions are made and followed up and, you know, just generally how things are, so it's not... So you can go from zero to 100 in a year instead of maybe a year and a half. So, uh, as far as, interestingly enough, when we were multitasking, when we were doing some NTU, uh, when we were waiting during that whole process, I was speaking to different people in the room, Attorney Clausen amongst others, trying to come up with a list of people who might be able to facilitate. I know Ms. Hoence, you know, suggested that Dr. Mosley do that. My own personal recommendation is, yes, he has skin in the game, but I want him to participate. And if you're facilitating, you really can't participate. That's just from my own experience as a project manager. And I do have, I don't have them with me, I have two or three names that some of them might be familiar to the board members, and I, I'll definitely bring them to a future meeting. And maybe we need to talk to those folks first, you know, we don't wanna mention names without speaking to them ahead of time, but I think there may be some professional resources available to us. Thank you.
Mrs. Zee?
Uh, one of the things that Dr. Brown did when she was here that I thought was helpful was she created a fact sheet. Some of you will remember that fact sheet. Uh, there was, there were things going on at the time and we just, political things downtown with the mayor and the city, and we took that fact sheet and handed it out to those people because unfortunately, the public doesn't always have, sadly enough, they don't have a good enough feel about our schools. I, I, I wish that every Alderman, as part of their induction, would be forced to go to visit one, at least one of our schools, one on each level, middle, high and elementary. That being said, I would, as part of this, uh, packet, I would think that fact sheet would be a very interesting thing for people who are running, and I think it could be expanded. I would like to have seen a lot more information on it, so, I don't know, I would ask, uh, Dr. Mosley to, if he, when he has time, which may not be real soon, but there's no hurry, take a look at it and see, see if you think it has any value because I, I thought it was valuable for the community more than for... It's, uh, it's, there's a lot to our district and it's, uh, when you, when you're sitting at home, you don't realize how much there is. So I just think it's a, an easy way for the public to at least get a feeling for how large our district is and how, 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 um, how complex it is. Thank you.
Anyone else over there? I think there's lots of different ways, well, let's stay with orientation first. There used to be a member of this board, Tom Vaughn, uh, and he put together a really nice PowerPoint presentation. It's, uh, 30 slides that gives you a really nice, uh, overview and, uh, of what the board does and all that sort of stuff, and, uh, I believe that was provided to both new members when they came on. Uh, and there's, of course, the opportunities to, uh, talk to the attorneys and understand right to know and all that. But to pull back to the conversation about governance, um, I'm, I'm pretty much all-in on this. I, I think that, uh, I would really like to see a board that, uh, knew its place, I guess, uh, and focused on, uh, oversight of the operation of the district, relying on our, the people that we employ, we interview and we employ to, to run the district. Uh, I obviously am partial to the, uh, the literature that I sent to everybody in the summer, the eight characteristics. I think that those give us a nice framework to talk about it, uh, whether we, uh, meet with some sort of facilitator and take two or three of those and say, "How do they apply to the way we work?" And, but I, I'm kind of, I'm inclined to, I think, agree with Mr., write this down there, Howard. Uh, I think that I would like to have the superintendent be part of the, the whole thing because a lot of the governance question revolves around our relationship with the superintendent and his relationship with us. And so I think it's a little difficult, I think he would be better suited to be part of the conversation than facilitating it. Uh, but I'm, I'm totally in favor. Uh, I, I think that there, there are places we can look. Uh, you know, maybe we can find somebody, uh, go down and talk to, uh, Mrs. Hatch down at the Chamber of Commerce, and we must have people that, perhaps have people that belong to the Chamber of Commerce whose business it is to come in and facilitate something like that, and maybe we can find out something like that. But I definitely wanna go forward with this, and so whichever direction the board wants to go, almost any direction, I'm on board with. Mrs. Hoence?
Thank you. Um, you said right at the beginning, the board needs to know its place. I think there is a bit of a fundamental difference between some board members, um, on what the board's place is. But putting that aside, I think what we've improved on is the civility and the respect among the board. It, it is improving a little. But as to this governance process, I would prefer a bottom-up approach, not bringing in somebody and doing a top-down. Um, I would want Dr. Mosley to participate. Um, I, and he is part of the team, so we're all together, but I would prefer that we did it among ourselves with, um, an in-house, you know, mediation a little bit. Instead of bringing somebody in that superimposes their ideas upon the board, we're having enough difficulty dealing with our own differences and ideas. And I, I just, if the question is, is whether it's bottom-up or whether it's somebody from the outside is coming in top-down that doesn't know our board and our issues as well as I, Dr. Mosley would be. So that's my concern.
I guess the only thing I would say to that, I think that someone who's trained to do this, like when you bring in a mediator, they, they're, they're training, their, their life is built around coming in and listening to both sides and getting a sense of where things are and helping people find common ground, and I think so if we, there have, there are people out there that go out and, consultants, that go out and help fix broken organizations. And, and so I'm not suggesting that we're gonna find somebody like that right here in Nashua, but I, I think that, uh, that's not a, an inconceivable thing to find. But, uh, are we in agreement that we want to move forward to this sort of thing and, uh, participate in some form of refined governance here? Mrs. Hoence?
I don't see this as a broken marriage, like we need rehab. We have our differences. Like, I think we're approaching it two different ways. So I, I'm, I'm reluctant to agree to some kind of remediation, like as if some of us have defects that need to be... We have differences and I, and we're getting there. I'm just concerned on the approach and how we go about this.
Can I suggest a compromise?
Sure.
How about I, I'm listening to the comments here, how about I prepare a potpourri of options? You know, we'll start from, you know, having an outside person to, to, you know, there was some talk about me, there's some talk about Chamber of Commerce, so kind of getting a, a list of options that the board might want to consider and then coming back. And I, I know Mr. Kaufman said he had some individuals as well, um, and then the board can discuss pros and cons around that as well, just to kind of, I know we're talking about it in conceptual, uh, manner, but maybe just kinda getting, kind of narrowing that focus under the umbrella of governance might help the board come to a decision on that. Just a thought.
Everybody good to go forward like that?
I was just, I was, good for me.
Okay. Jamal?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dr. Mosley?
Yes.
We got 12 minutes to burn here.
Grace.
Of course, we gotta do a public comment.
Are we, we good?
You certainly can.
No, no, I'm asking you, you're okay. I'm well. Is there anything you'd like to share?
Get your light on?
Oh, I'm wonderful, how are you?
Well.
Um, I would just comment on what just happened. I don't believe, um, that it's a broken marriage. I do think that the reason that possibly a facilitator of some sort would be useful is because everyone has differences and the way that people work through their differences with others can be different, and I think that someone possibly from the outside, maybe someone in the school district itself, would be helpful just so that it doesn't get nasty and that things get accomplished in an efficient and effective manner.
Thank you.
Aren't they great? These, these students that come in here and give us...
Super.
Something else?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. All right, so, uh, that brings us down to the public comments section at the end of our agenda.
Adam Marqu, Forge Lurie Lane, President of the Teachers Union. Just a comment on what you were just talking about. Personally, I think you need someone who has no idea what we do. Outsider, come in and look at everything. We actually did that at the union with my executive board and leadership team, and having someone come in who's not doing the day-to-day things with us was able to push us in directions that we wouldn't have thought about or was outside that comfort zone. So, um, I'll do it if you'd like, I want you in charge.
What are your rates? Tell us about your rates.
I do it for free.
Oh, well, we'll, we'll consider it, we'll get back to you, Adam.
Okay. I know. Ha, 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 Dan. I hope that's in the minutes. He said it's still too much, that it's free.
What are you, talking about direct advertising, huh?
Wow. I just wanted to comment, um, that I think we, we take a, a few days off and we hit the ground running again with, um, negotiations. I can't speak for your side, obviously, but, um, the contract was rejected, um, but that doesn't mean that we're not willing to come back and discuss it further with you guys and see if we can come up with something, um, that we can all agree to, like we have been working towards. Um, I will comment that the membership will continue to not serve on district committees, but that is all the action that the membership, um, is taking at this point. We need some time to, to see where we're at, see where we move forward, um, and hopefully that can be done, um, quickly. But, you know, it is what it is and now we're gonna, as we suggested, link arms and move forward, and, you know, hopefully we can take care of this sooner rather than later. Um, and to Mr. Farrington's point about the headline in the paper, I can't wait to see tomorrow's. Thank you.
Uh, I think he's going.
Historical note. We have done this, uh, before, having, uh, off-site meetings at the, um, up in Concord at the municipal, uh, council. And, uh, we had, uh, quite lively discussions on the things that were relevant to the board at the time and what, uh, what we were doing in the schools and, and, uh, all sorts of things. And, uh, it was very simple. We, uh, we drove up there and, um, I remember going with, uh, Mrs. Zee, and, uh, we had very good discussions on the elements of the day and of the, uh, the school district in general.
All right.
And we were able to come to some conclusions as what we were doing right from what we might be doing, uh, in error.
We're gonna put...
Probably one of the best things that we have done. And why we stopped doing it, I don't know. But it would be wise to do it again because it is a, a neutral, uh, place to meet and a neutral environment. And, uh, light lunch and everything that went along with it, and, uh, everybody was relaxed and, uh, and open to, uh, to ideas.
Well, we'll see, we'll see what, uh, Dr. Mosley brings back and see what he has for proposals. Uh, Adam, as far as that, the other is concerned, the contract, we'll do, we're gonna do the same. We'll talk internally and, and give it, everybody a chance to settle down and, uh, we'll be in touch on setting up another date.
Looking forward to it, thank you.
You bet.
Stephanie Keating Baird. I am, um, living at 63 Amherst Street for the last 22 years. I'm a teacher at Fairgrounds Middle School. I was a member of the negotiation team and also, um, I am a member at, at large of our executive board. So I can't really, um, say too much about what happened tonight, but I can speak from my own personal experience. I've been in the district 13 credited years of experience. This is my 14th year, and I've been on step six for a very long time. Um, I have three jobs because I am a, a single parent. Happened a long time ago, wasn't exactly my choice, but it is what it is. So having this contract not go through tonight is pretty devastating for me as a person. At the same time, I totally understand it because there were winners and there were losers. And so going forward, what I hope that the board can do is make a concerted effort to take all of the pay schedules from all of the surrounding communities and compare what we offer our teachers here in Nashua. Because I, I wasn't here when Linda spoke, but I know she spoke about greed, and, uh, I know we're gonna hear that tomorrow about you greedy teachers. And the fact of the matter is that if you look at the salary schedule that's published and that the public gets to see, uh, according to that, I make $15,000 more a year than I make. And so that's another thing I'd like to see the board address, is maybe, uh, publish what's really going on. The other thing, and the final thing, is I totally understand that you're in a predicament as well. You have to answer to the taxpayers in the city of Nashua, but I do not want you to forget that the staff is the lifeblood of this institution and that we are the ones on the front line every day and we... on the front line every day, and we deserve the same respect. I too am a taxpayer in the city of Nashua, so I feel like I contribute to my very own salary, and my escrow just went up $21 because my taxes increased. My escrow went up $21, my health insurance went up 13 percent. I've actually lost money and bring home less in my paycheck than I did 13 years ago, and that, my friends, is ridiculous, and I am not alone. I know you're in predicament, but I am asking you to please advocate for the teachers. I know you have a responsibility to the city, I realize that, but it's about time that the people in this city saw the facts, the real facts, and it's about time somebody stood up for us and said, look, they're not greedy, they make $13,000 more a year in Manchester. You know, we're fairly commensurate with area communities on the bottom of the pay schedule and on the top, but in the, everywhere in between, we are not. From my years of experience in Manchester, I make $12,000 a year more, 12,000. Now, if you want me to go to Manchester, I will consider it, but you should know that I have been on the middle school steering committee, I've helped write the literacy curriculum, I'm helping write the English curriculum, I'm piloting a new program, I've been on the superintendent's cabinet, I work my butt off for this, for this city, and I hate it when somebody calls me greedy, because I feel that I deserve to make a decent salary, one where I don't have to work 70 hours a week. That's all I want to say. So, please, help us, help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Board member comments? Start over here, go around, or you want, you want to start tonight?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Oden?
Often, we don't get thank yous, but I think all of us got a note from four teachers on the main level, from Mount Pleasant, representing them and their students, Mrs. Bennett, Mrs. Dunkley, Mrs. Merchant, and Mrs. McIntyre, thanking us for, you didn't get one?
No, I didn't get one.
Oh.
They thanked us for the air conditioning.
Was that a while ago?
That was last year.
No. No, they just, in our last packet, we received.
I don't get a packet.
It was, oh, it was memegraft off. They, they thanked us for making sure that the environment there was the best for the kids and for themselves, and it was more productive. Also, I had the privilege to sit on the interview team for the new interim assistant principal at the high school, and after the interviews were over, I heard a discussion that I hadn't heard, and it was about two of our freshmen at North on the football team were highlighted by Fox 25 in Boston, and it was getting national attention. So, I, I, I want people to know that you hear an awful lot about kids that maybe you think, geez, they shouldn't have done this and they shouldn't have done that, but this really changes the conversation. It's just a few weeks into the high school football season, but Nashua North may already have the highlight of the year, an audible by, called by a pair of freshmen. Cousins Devon Bersetty and Julian Gonzalez said they were bothered by people who made fun of one of their 14-year-old teammates for wearing the same outfit to school every day, an old T-shirt, faded jean shorts, and sneakers with no laces. "The way he was looking, the way people were making fun of him too," Devon told Boston 25 news reporter Ted Daniel. "When practice ended Tuesday, the boys surprised their teammate with new shoes, socks, and a number of new outfits. 'I got him black Air Max, sweatpants, Nike socks, and a sweater,' Julian said. The boys bussed tables and did yard work to gather $150 each for the shoes and clothing.' Julian says it was worth every penny to see the smile on his teammate's face. 'When I was younger, I was in the same situation, they made fun of my shoes and my clothes,' he said. 'The kindness showed by both boys has garnered them very high praise from their coach. I'm very proud, because one of the things most coaches will talk, other than football, is how to give back, to be helpful, be a good person, and see stuff like that, it's great,' Coach Dante LaRonde said. But Ms. Gingras, the athletic director, happened to be on the interview team, and she was saying she has gotten communication from people as far away as Kentucky, and they are sending gift cards to those two boys who thought about their classmates. So, realize, these are our kids, and it's just amazing, if it doesn't warm your heart, then, then something is wrong. So, to, to those boys, thank you for your leadership, your kindness, your caring, and to their parents, how proud they must be of raising young men like that.
Mrs. Zee, want to top that?
No, it's been too emotional for me tonight, I'll just pass.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hoence?
Thank you. Earlier this evening, we had the teacher from our CAD program come in, and I was hoping that Dr. Mosley could put in a bulletin and brag about how wonderful they were. I think the flight was canceled, he, he competes in the national tournaments, he drove to Kentucky, they came in, they placed really, really well, and he was reciting off a whole long list of places that they took, and it's just one class, and Nashua's got a lot to be proud of, so if we could just have a little brag sheet about that program, it would help, you know, encourage our CTE.
Right up. Mr. Kaufman?
No, I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Manthorpe?
No, I said no.
Nothing, not even now?
Not even now, thank you.
You've had your say? I've got nothing to say, I'm trying to, I'm going to be in trouble if I burn up all the time and go past nine o'clock, so I'd no.
Move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn by Mrs. Hoence, seconded by Mr. Kaufman, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? You okay with that, Mr. Moser?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay, good. Have a good night, we're going to hang up.
All right.
Technically, yes.